Good evening. At this time, please silence your cell phones and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. For those of you physically present in the council chambers, if you desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They are physically available at the front door. Once you complete that, please present it to the city clerk. Speakers will be called upon to speak at the appropriate time. Those participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time also. Each person is allowed three minutes speaking time. Our city clerk will now make a broadcast announcement regarding our Zoom connection.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As of June 15th, 2020, the City of Grand Terrace reopened its public meetings. Therefore, tonight's meeting of March 23rd is open to the public. Please be advised that face masks are required, social distancing will be practiced, and occupancy limits will be enforced. Additionally, pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N2920 issued by Governor Newsom, tonight's meeting will also be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on the city's website and Channel 3. If you would like to participate telephonically and speak on an agenda item, you can access the meeting by dialing 1-669-900-9128, enter meeting ID 825-1373-4821, and enter password number 774042. You will be placed in the waiting room muted until it is your turn to speak. You may also submit your comments by sending them to ccpubliccomment@grandterres-ca.gov. The City of Grand Terrace thanks you for taking all precautions to prevent spreading COVID-19.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. At this time, I will call to order the regular meeting of the City of Grand Terrace for Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021. And the city manager just let me know right before the meeting that our sheriff lieutenant tonight is at the hospital with a member of our sheriff, one of our officers who was shot, and so please keep that officer in your prayers. At this time, we will have an invocation offered by Pastor Pat Bauer of the Church, and he is coming to us via Zoom. Immediately following that, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by city manager Harold Duffy. So if you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Bauer?
Good evening. In Psalm 133, beautiful, short, it says, "Behold how good and pleasant it is for the people to dwell together in unity, is like the precious oil upon the head coming down from the beard, even coming down the edge of the robes. It's like the dew of Mount Hermon, and it is the blessing of Almighty God." In this day and age of discord and disharmony and division, we would like to just seek the Lord to reunite us. We pray especially for the officer that was wounded. We pray a full recovery without any complications. So let's bow our hearts together as we pray. Dear God, I lift up our nation and this city and all its leaders to you today, and I repent on behalf of its people whom in disarray are walking, not in harmony, but in great discord, something a united people could never afford. For unless we lay down our divisive hate, we will resign ourselves to an evil fate. We will fail in the great trust our forefathers placed in us, that by God's sovereign grace will remain as one, one nation under God. Oh, may that be done. Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Bauer. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Madam City Clerk?
Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Councilmember Robles?
Present.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Present.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you. We do not have any special presentations tonight. Is there a change to the order? Are there any additions or removal of items from the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, there's just one under special presentations. We, I'm sorry, we have our finance director here to introduce some new employees, so I'd like to take the opportunity to do that right now.
Okay. So I should have asked about reordering before I announced there was no special presentation. Thank you. May we have our Assistant City Manager come forward, who's also our finance director, Cynthia Fortune?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council. As Mr. Duffy had mentioned several months ago, we've actually hired new employees in the finance department, but due to the pandemic and other issues, we have not been able to bring them down here to council to present to you. So tonight, they are down here, and we'd like to introduce the two new senior accountants that we had hired. One is Ms. Christine Clayton, and the other one is Ms. Brenda Angulo. What I would like to do is ask each of them to come up, just to say a couple of words of themselves, so that they can give you the background that they have. One used to work for an auditing firm, and the other actually used to work for the Janet Goskey Foundation in the City of Riverside. So may I ask, Brenda, would you like to come up first, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Well, my name is Brenda. Sorry, it's my first time here. Nice meeting you guys in person. I am the new senior accountant. I come from a CPA firm in Riverside. They specialize in auditing government agencies, cities, special districts, and I worked there for five years, and I graduated from Cal State San Bernardino with a degree in accounting.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Council, they're shy, so.
No, I think once you approach that lectern, the whole world changes. No, I'm right there with you.
Ms. Clayton, please.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Good evening. My name is Christine, and I came from the Janet Goskey Senior Center in Riverside. I was there for five years, excuse me, six years, and prior to that, I worked 10 years in public accounting in Glendora, and I currently live in Riverside, and it is a pleasure to meet you guys in person. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Wonderful that you could both come down here and see us. All right. We will move on with our agenda. We have our consent calendar. The items on the consent calendar are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests to remove items at this time? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
May I remove the consent calendar as presented?
Second.
Councilmember Wilson, motions approval, second by Councilmember Allen. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Thank you. Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Just wanted to see if you were paying attention. All right, so we'll move to public comment. This is the opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on our regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any items not on the agenda. However, we may ask for you to make a clarification or answer a brief question if we are wanting to better understand your statements. I also may request a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment, or council may ask that a matter be agendized for a future meeting. Thank you. Our first speaker is Mike Imson.
First, I've had both my shots. Can I take the mask off to speak? Keep it on. Take it off? All right, thank you. All right, first, I apologize because I was told by a 17-year-old grandson that we would be voting on a proposal for a skate park slash scooter park for Grand Terrace. So since that's not the case, I've been informed, but I'd like to, I guess, lay the groundwork and maybe give you a few things to think of in case it comes to the podium in the future. I have three good reasons why I believe that a skate park, scooter park would be good for Grand Terrace, the kids and the adults. One is that it'll get our kids outside and away from video screens, and it'll give them sunshine, exercise, and clean air. So I think that would be good for the kids. The second reason is it would be good for our citizens, I believe, because it would get the kids and skateboards and scooters off of the sidewalks, off of our, out of our parking lots, away from the fronts of businesses, and I think that'd be good for the citizens in general. And third, I'm tired of driving in the Redlands. That's a lot of gas and traveling, and we don't, we drive all the way out to Redlands, him and his friends, so that they can skate and scooter. And we don't know what kind of kids are out there. They're out of sight. We could take them to San Bernardino, which I won't do, and I won't take them to Rialto, or we take them away in the Riverside, and they're out of touch, out of reach. We don't know what kind of characters they're meeting. So I know that Grand Terrace is a good community. I've lived here for 28 years, and I believe that they would be in a safe environment and close to home, save us gas and money, but most importantly, we know where they are, and we know they're in a good neighborhood. So that's most important, and that's for everybody. So I hope you'll consider it in the future, and thank you for letting me speak. If it comes up in the future, I'll be back. All right.
Thank you for taking the time to come in tonight.
Sure, thank you.
I appreciate your comments. Our next speaker is James Timoney.
James Timoney, I currently serve on the board of the Foundation of Grand Terrace. For those in the community that are watching in our, in our audience, Foundation of Grand Terrace is a nonprofit dedicated solely to the purpose of identifying needs within our community only. It's a 100% voluntary board, and we look for items where as we can fundraise and put on events specifically for our community. We're the ones that brought you the Veterans Wall of Freedom. We championed the, the push and startup of the dog park that the city then was able to support and make that come to fruition. And we also, this last Christmas, was able to bless 250 families with toys. Basically, each family got five toys per child. Good, good toys, not just little dinky things, but otherwise, majority of these families would not have anything to give their kids for Christmas. So we do different philanthropic efforts such as that. But tonight, I'm here to just go back to early February, I believe it was, there was some discussion with regards to some land that was going to be the proposed start site for the Blue Mountain Hiking Trail. From what I gathered, that was not going to be the desired site for that starting point. And so if that's the case, I'm here also advocating on behalf of the skate park. Been kind of engaged in this for the last five years, had the pleasure of sitting with Mr. Duffy on a few meetings, in a few meetings. I know it's officially on the agenda, we're officially going to have a skate park, but I think it's kind of been put to the back burner, but now it's time that we're asking if we can push that forward. If this land is not going to be used, I believe it's up off of observation, just on the eastern side, if that land's not going to be put to use for the Blue Mountain Hiking Trail, then I'd like to propose that we possibly utilize that land for the skate park. And appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Timoney. Appreciate you being here tonight and sharing your, your thoughts about skate park and to let us know some more about the Foundation of Grand Terrace. Are there any other requests to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we'll move back to our agenda. We have no public hearings, we have no unfinished business. We'll move on to new business, starting with item number seven, funding agreement between OmniTrans and the City of Grand Terrace for Measure I funds for the city's senior transportation program and related adjustment to FY 2021 positions summary and related adjustment to budget appropriations. Assistant City Manager Cynthia Fortune?
Good evening again, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council. As just mentioned, the staff report is for the funding agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and OmniTrans and related position summary and budget appropriations adjustments. This staff report supports goal number four, to develop and implement successful partnerships by working with a regional agency to secure funding for programs and projects that benefit seniors in our community. So to provide a little background, on December 16th, 2015, the city entered into a three-year partnership with Valley Transportation Services. They were called Vtrans at the time, to start the city's senior transportation program. Several months later, on August 1st, 2016, Vtrans assigned and transferred all rights of this agreement with the city to OmniTrans, and they were designated as the New Consolidation Transportation Services Agency for the San Bernardino Valley. Now, a couple of years later, in 2018, the city and OmniTrans entered into a two-year funding agreement to continue that initial, initial project of funding the city's senior transportation program through the use of Measure I funds for seniors and disabled persons. What is required is that the city make a match. So our matching funds have been annually $10,000 from the general fund and $5,000 from the city's air quality management district. So our total, our total senior bus transportation program would cost the city between $65,000 and $70,000 annually. So OmniTrans Measure I Regional Mobility Partnership Program provides funding to support the development and sustainability of programs that provide transportation services to seniors and individuals with disabilities throughout the San Bernardino Valley. In June of 2020, OmniTrans distributed a Measure I Call for Projects to agencies with transportation programs that support seniors and individuals with disabilities in the San Bernardino Valley. Now, this Call for Project covered a two-year period from January 2021 to December 2022. That was a typo in the Stafford word. I think it said 23, but it's only supposed to be two years, so two calendar years, 21 and 22. Now, they had $2.75 million available for each year. However, applicants who wanted to request two years of funding per project, whether it was for capital expenditures or operating or a combination of both, the max that any agency or any applicant can submit was $250,000 per year. So the city, with the help of OmniTrans, put together a proposal, and we submitted a Call for Projects, and we actually received a grant award. So we submitted a proposal, and we actually received funding for the following: the lease of two electric vehicles, and the installation of two charging stations for those vehicles, the increase of the existing bus driver position from a 35-hour work week to a 40-hour work week, and the addition of a part-time bus driver. So our first chart here is just showing what our capital expenditures are by calendar year, and as you can see, the total project expense is actually $97,600 in the first year because the installation of those two charging stations are only going to be in the first year, there won't be an expense in the second year. And the next, following year is $45,600. But what I wanted to show on the chart is the required match for capital expenditures is 10%, which we did say the general fund was going to provide. And that's kind of what the bus would look like. Actually, it would be similar to the bus that Mr. Duffy was able to negotiate with Vtrans at the time, where we were leasing it for a dollar and then we bought it for a dollar. But this is a brand-new electric bus, so. Anyway, here are the operating expenditures, and as we were approved, we were actually approved for a 40-hour bus driver and a 20-hour bus driver position, both with benefits: fuel cost, charges, overheads. So as you can see, the total for each year is $118,000 or $119,000 each, and again, as shown, we have to provide a match. Now, for operating, prior to this Call for Projects, the city was actually subsidizing one-third. Now we're only going to be subsidizing 20%. So they actually increased our grant funds in relation to this and increased the personnel. And the reason why we asked for a part-time 20-hour driver, when our current bus driver either goes on vacation or gets sick, there is no transportation, and because she only was working a 35-hour week, for those that wanted to go out in evenings or do weekend trips, we could not provide. So now this will give us that ability, and we'll have a little bit more flexibility. And considering San Bernardino is now in the red tier, a lot more things are going to start to open, so we might actually increase the ridership in our transportation services. So based on all of that, here are the proposed appropriations for both capital expense and operating expense, and it does show how, and this is only for this current year, so it is only for a six-month period. We will be requesting the rest for fiscal year 2122, and this shows how much from the general fund and how much from the Air Quality Management District Fund is being requested for both capital and operating. And so staff is recommending that city council approve the following: approve the funding agreement between the city and OmniTrans, authorize the city manager to execute the contract, approve the adjustments to the city's position summary, again, increasing the existing best bus driver hours, or bus driver from a 35-hour work week to a 40-hour work week, approve the addition of a part-time bus driver, which is going to be 20 hours a week, and approve the related appropriations for the agreement. And that concludes my report. I will be happy to answer any questions the city council may have.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Fortune. Are there questions of staff at this time? I have two questions.
Yes, Mayor.
Will we have a plan in place for the electric bus if it runs the battery down when it is out shuttling our seniors?
Well, we would like to think that we are going to exercise, not preventive maintenance, but take care of that. We were intending to install one of the charging stations actually in our maintenance yard, and the second one, I was discussing with Mr. Duffy on the corner of Sir Mount Vernon and Barton. He will negotiate with one of those properties. But the intent is to always have them charging at night, so that they're always ready to go each day.
And the, the charging is different for the bus than it is for a regular electric vehicle, correct? No. So if there's another electrical charging station within the city, then automobiles can use it as well?
So it should be able to use a supercharger that we have outside along, and that's a fast charger, and it also has the capacity to use a standard, what they call a level two charger.
Okay. That's good. And will we be keeping the exist, or the current bus as well as a backup?
We, we can.
That wasn't, that wasn't planned out? It wasn't thought about? It wasn't?
No, the, the reason, well, we are hoping that the two will be sufficient. Of course, we will keep it running, but our experience with this, and granted, it's got more than 200,000 miles on it, and every time it goes down, it is costing the city, well, our, our grant fund, several thousand dollars.
Okay.
Mayor, and one of the other things, too, is that, that sometimes we have to look at this grant to make sure, sometimes the goal is to take out a vehicle, a gas vehicle, and replace it with an electric vehicle. So I'm not sure if they're going to allow us to keep that as part of the grant process. We'll have to find out about that.
Yeah, I'm sure they do want you to take that bus off the road. Okay, that's, that's my last question. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll move all four of the staff recommendations. I'll even read them if you want.
That's okay.
Okay.
So, motion by Councilmember Allen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Protem Hussey. Would you please call the vote?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So we'll move on to item eight, which is approval of oath of office, acceptable code of conduct, and censure policy to be applicable to the city council and all commissions or committees. And we have our city attorney, Adrian Guerra.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item supports council goal number five, engaging in proactive communication by establishing policies and procedures for meetings of the city council and to promote community participation and promoting orderly meetings. As quick background, the city council established a subcommittee of Councilmember Robles to look into updating our council policies and procedures, and at our January 21st special meeting, the city council appointed a subcommittee to look at code of conduct, a censure policy, and, you know, what would be grounds for censure itself. And thereafter, the subcommittee of Mayor Protem Hussey and Councilmember Wilson met, came up with a draft policy. I later met with the subcommittee to discuss this matter and work with them in coming up with a draft policy, and that is what is before you tonight. There are several issues that are going to be addressed. The first one is the oath of office. The oath of office, which is shown on packet page 195, is directly from the state constitution. This was an interesting discussion that I had with Councilmember Wilson. There are additional provisions in the actual state constitution, but those provisions were actually struck down by the California Supreme Court, so we are left with this one paragraph that constitutes the oath of office. What our research found was that cities are really not allowed to deviate from that oath of office because some cities could, in theory, add political language, religious language, or other notions in there that would differ from city to city. So the thought is to have a uniform oath of office across the board from each city to city. The only thing we did note is we added at the very end, "So help me God." That is very traditional, but we are putting it in as an optional statement for each council member if they wish to, to state that. The second part is the acceptable code of conduct. The subcommittee identified 20 items that they included, and these would be the basis, the benchmark, basically, for everybody serving in a public capacity here in Grand Terrace. I won't go through each one of them, but I'll read a few of them just as a sample. One number one, read and examine the agenda, agenda packet materials. In other words, be prepared for meetings. Recuse yourself if there's a conflict of interest. Speak in restraining tones to encourage civility. Proceed efficiently, fairly, and effectively. One that we had talked about generally was a requirement that each council member comply with all laws and regulations. The subcommittee, and based on my research regarding the oath of office, decided it's probably appropriate to put it in this code of conduct. So number 20 is comply with all laws, including the laws of the City of Grand Terrace. The next... The next aspect of it is, okay, we have the code of conduct. The next step would be grounds for censure. So one of the things we discussed was, can a council member, can the council remove a council member based on behavior? And the answer is no, they cannot. However, we do have the opportunity for censure. And censure is basically a public rebuke of certain behavior. We did identify, however, six, seven areas of grounds for censure. Serial unexcused absences of three or more meetings from the regular city council meeting. Violating laws. Unlawful harassment. Violation of the code of conduct that we just went through. So these would be appropriate grounds for censure. The next step would be the censure procedure. The censure procedure is laid out here, and it effectively is a due process aspect. So in other words, the charging official identified the grounds for censure in terms of the specifics of the violation, a description of the behavior, and a statement of when that occurred. The statement of charges is provided to the official who is being proposed to be censured. That individual has a right to respond. And then there's a hearing before the council. It is much like the Trump impeachment, effectively, where there's a hearing before there is an impeachment. Here, it would be a censure. And it's basically, as I was discussing with the subcommittee, it would be like a scarlet letter in many ways, a public rebuke of the violation that the council found. So that would be the censure process. But it is a due process concept. It is intended, there's a really good statement in here that, you know, it is, it's intended to really help promote our policy. It isn't intended to be a very harsh reality, but it is intended to kind of promote compliance with our policies. Lastly, the subcommittee wanted to include some language regarding removal from office. As I stated earlier, council members cannot remove other council members from office. However, there are procedures in place under state law that do allow for removal from office, so we did include some of those in here. The other last point is, the subcommittee wanted this policy to apply to all commissions and committees, not just the City Council. So this portion of the policy will be applicable to all boards and commissions appointed by the City Council. And to that end, we also included a statement at the very end on packet page one-ninety-nine that discusses the fact that those commissioners and committee members could also be removed from office based on their violation of the code of conduct, which will be applicable to them. So we have included that in here. And as a reminder, commissioners serve at the will of the City Council and can be removed at any time with or without cause by the council. So this is the draft policy that was approved by the subcommittee and is now before the council for their thoughts and comments. The next step would be if the council was agreeable to this draft, would be to direct me and the city clerk to work together to compile all the revisions that were proposed at each of the special council meetings to discuss the council policies and procedures, incorporate those changes, and bring them back as a final document for adoption. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I would also like to see if Councilmember Wilson or Mayor Protem Hussey had any comments from the subcommittee role. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra. And I will ask that Mayor Protem and Hussey and Councilmember Wilson, if you have something that you want to add, and then we have questions by Councilmember Allen. Okay. Nope. All right. Questions? Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you for that presentation, Adrian. Is this a fairly standard policy in wording and content, kind of across the board among cities that you've been, yeah? Okay.
Yes.
One of the things I wanted, I noticed as we were going through it with you, on page one-ninety-eight, the grounds for censure, down at the bottom, like item four, unlawful harassment, or item five, unlawfully creating a hostile work environment.
Yes.
Is there a lawful way to do those things? I'm not advocating it. What I mean is, you know, are we going to, is there going to, is there going to be a tit-for-tat conversation between someone over what's lawful and what's unlawful of harassment? And, oh, well, we're going to have to let you harass now because you're right on the line? Or even the other one, creating a hostile work environment? Is there a lawful way that someone can do that?
Right. And that's an interesting point. I mean, we could tweak the language to make that a little less concerning. Generally speaking, any harassment would not be appropriate.
I agree with that.
So if you want to say, just strike out the words unlawfully, I think, I think that would be appropriate, if that was acceptable to the council.
I had the same questions.
Okay.
Councilmember Robles, you have questions?
Yeah. On, procedurally, because, you know, as I say, it just concerns me when you have an ad hoc committee that thinks that you can remove council members. You know, that gives me a bad feeling on this thing. You know, because only the voters can do that. So on the process, you know, the understanding that when, is the understanding that you're not going to be a median saying, "I censure you." I mean, a person has a right to due process.
That is correct.
So, you know, because up here, what I'm afraid of is that we're going to start censoring each other from the dais when the appropriate thing is if there's a charge, you have to file it with the city clerk. It has to be written because a perception could be that they think your behavior was wrong, but you were responding to someone's, you know, language towards you. So that's why, you know, on this, I just want to make sure that we understand what, you know, constitution is and the due process is, and the difference between censuriness and removal. I'm not sure, because in the city of Victorville, I noticed that they had to do some of the removal things. Is that part of what you've seen in other procedures, that they actually lay it out? Because this is a little bit different. It's the voters' discretion versus a council discretion.
Yes. And I think the thought was just, just as a reminder, that that state law is out there. But, but again, we were having a general discussion, and, and, you know, it was more of a, what do you call it? We were looking at all options and all issues, so that issue did come up. But again, it was more, this issue was more just as a reminder.
Yeah. And is there a better place that this could be rather than our, in our procedures?
No, because this would be our governing document governing policies and procedures of the council. So I think this would be the appropriate place if you wanted to include it. Otherwise, it's already in state law.
Okay.
If this is approved and moves forward, how will we let members of our committees and commissions know?
Yes. Good, great question. So we did have that discussion as well. So the plan would be that we would, if you could tell from the language, we, we did not identify this specifically to the City Council. This was, includes the legislative body, which is the council and all commissions and committees. My understanding is that we provide a booklet, a binder, to each of our commissioners when they take office. We would include this document as part of that binder and have them initial off that they've received a copy of it and read through it. So they will have a copy of it.
Okay. And then as far as the steps for, for going through a procedure of charging either a council member with censure or a commission or committee member, will there be actual steps to guide somebody if that's something that they believe that, that they want to do? Because this is an overview statement of what's allowed and what's not, so to speak. But there really aren't steps as far as process. And I know you described what the process is, but, but as a matter of practicality for somebody who wants to step through that process, will that be part of it as well?
Yes. And actually, if you, if you go to page one-ninety-seven, in subsection C, there is a section called "Censure Procedure," and we do lay out the dates of when things are due, the procedure for the statement of charges, how that's delivered to the person that's being proposed to be censured, what should be included in that document, the right of that individual to respond. So it is laid out, and if you'd like me to make that a little more clear or, or highlight that a little more, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. And you're saying they just create their own, their own written statement?
Yes.
For the most part?
Yes.
Okay. And then would that include if there was grounds for removing somebody from a committee or commission? Because we talk about censure, but we don't talk about really a process for the members of the boards, commissions, and committees. We just state that it can be done for the reasons that they're done.
Right.
So I would like to see that there'd be an outline for what that process would look like as well.
Okay.
That would just be my suggestion. Okay. Any further questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmember Wilson.
We read down through page, we did, we did consternate over those particular items.
Okay.
And if you read down through the bottom of page one-ninety-eight, it goes through an extensive process as far as whether or not the motion passes. If it doesn't pass, then everything's dead. You know, it all goes back.
Sure.
And it also says that if the motion doesn't pass, that you can't bother that person with it again for a year, at least. So, you know, it gives that kind of a breathing room situation.
Sure.
It also allows an opportunity to appeal the circumstance, and it allows the person that has been charged, once they've done this notice from one to the other, to bring witnesses as well. So it's, it's, as the city attorney said, it's a standard course of law deal. We patterned it off of the, what takes place in Congress. And actually, I believe it's the, not the House of Representatives, but the Senate actually has a means to eliminate a senator out of their place, but we opted not to get that critical. There is no real precedence in, in local law for that kind of circumstance. So the idea was, is that we stick to what is legally set up at this point, and that would be you can either vote the person out under a normal ballot, or if the person has health problems, or, you know, all the ordinary circumstances where the person would quit their circumstance.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. I appreciate that clarification. Any further questions? All right, we'll open public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for determination of how we'd like to move forward. Councilmember Robles?
I think we're going to have to be a little more careful about, because when we get to questions, it's just questions. And then oftentimes, we come back and it says, okay, entertain a motion, or in this case, determination. And we need to say, this is time for deliberation, so we can make comments on it. Otherwise, we're going to get into issues of, is it your turn to speak? You know?
And generally, if we have a motion on the floor, then we can have discussion about it. And that is why, when you look at the rules of order, they say if you don't have a motion on the floor, then you don't really know what you're discussing. So, so, and I understand there's this discomfort with, if there's a motion, we might just sweep into voting on it, and we will, we will certainly work on not being in that habit.
So maybe we could make it our habit to say, I move the item for discussion.
Absolutely. I mean, you have to make your motion, but then you say, but for the sake of discussion, I will make this particular motion. Absolutely, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, because, yeah, so my, you know, I think this is, this is great. I, you know, it was in other stuff that I saw. I still think it's a little bit not clear maybe for commissions. But again, you know, I think for ourselves, when we get back on the other part, we need to get a discussion of ourselves, is that we got to remind ourselves, we got to put a motion on the floor. And then that way, we don't feel that there, you know, we're going to get into a discussion of, you know, is it your turn? All kinds of things like, maybe like that, we could avoid. And the other, other thing, when we get to that other part, you know, there is some parliamentary procedures, you know, about personal privilege. And we need to, you know, resolve that thing because it's uncomfortable to be up here and trying to debate issues when that does exist as a parliamentary procedure. And I think we did have a discussion, thinking about this because it's good old, about having our attorney act as a parliamentarian to help us get through it. Because, you know, really, like, we spend time studying this, and we get here and reviewing it, and sometimes we can kind of slip up and forget that the habit is we got to make a motion. All right, thank you.
All right. Was there a motion in there?
Yes, I move approval of the item.
Second.
Okay. So I have a motion for approval and a second motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Wilson. Now, I'm going to ask each of you, will you consider in part of that approval, my suggestion that we talk a little bit more specifically about removal of the board, commission, and committee members, maybe separately from just the censure procedure? Because to me, in the outlines, it, it goes grounds for censure, and that makes me think that it's for council, and we have removal from office. And then we do talk about the appointed members, but we don't have a lot of process in there.
Yeah, I amend my motion for, because I have the same concerns, that we, we adjust the language so it's clear between council and boards and commissions, and it's reiterated what the process is. So there's no...
Okay. So you'll amend your first. Councilmember Wilson, will you amend your second?
For discussion purposes, Mayor, I would ask the city attorney to shed a little light on that because I believe the meat is in there. It's just that, as you read it, for us, for the subcommittee, as we dealt with it, and the city manager and city attorney, we were working in it. And so when you get something hit with something like this, and it's fresh, you think, well, wait a minute, where are those parts? Well, the parts are there.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it's wordsmithing.
Right. It might just need to be broken out differently, and that's, that's all I'm asking for.
So I'd ask the city attorney to explain how the situation so far as committees and subcommittees are reacted to.
Right. So if you look on page, packet page one-ninety-five, under the first section, we define legislative body, the term, shaming the city council, its boards, commissions, and committees. So all the way through, under oath of office, acceptable code of conduct, and all the other sections, we use the term legislative body, meaning it applies to all.
Okay.
So, and as Councilmember Wilson stated, yes, the meat, like, the censure procedure specifically, the meat of the process is there. The steps are absolutely there. That being said, if, if the council wants me to, because we will be going through the actual policies and procedures and organizing everything, this is just the meat of it, we could look ways to kind of, you know, make sure that that's a little more clear beyond what we have here. But I think what we have here covers it.
Right. And I understand your subcommittee did a lot, or your ad hoc committee did a considerable amount of work, and you know what's in there. And just for anybody approaching this particular draft, my, my suggestion is, it's all in there, but maybe it just needs to be broken out differently or pointed to differently. That's, that was, that's only my suggestion, that somebody might come along and, and not understand how elegantly you have created it. Councilmember Allen, you have a question or you had comments?
No. I, I think that now I understand what you were getting at. I was going to ask you, I was going to say, I don't quite understand what your concerns are with that, but I think after this last discussion, I do get it now. So I, I would support what you're saying.
All right, thank you. See a hand being raised by City Manager Duffy?
Yes. Mayor, I just wanted to maybe add a comment that, is it possible that a, a title would be helpful? So for example... would be helpful? So for example, if you look at this section, and it says here, legislative bodies shall mean city council, its boards, commissions, committees as applicable. But if you were going to be putting this in a Parks Commission's packet, if you just had a heading title that said, you know, code of conduct and oath of office enforcement for the Parks Committee, and then, so they would be the legislative body, and that would kind of bring everything together by having a title for each body that it goes to, having a title page or a title at the beginning of it. That might be helpful.
Okay. So this goes in as the policy, but then for each of the committees and commissions, they have an oath of office with their title on it?
Yes.
And it goes into all the other? Okay. That would be acceptable to me. I think that would make it very easy to understand. Okay. So then, does that mean that we go back to the original first motion? Or where do we stand with our motion here? I think the amendment was to make it more understandable. Is that true?
Right, it was. So I think we're still okay.
Right. You're just making it a...
So I'll just say, amend my motion to break out the statement of charges and censure item by each body. Because it really doesn't belong in ours. This is for us. So we keep ours, and then they adopt their part.
Okay, so there'll be one policy, and then each body will have their code of conduct, oath of office. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Okay. And Councilmember Wilson?
Might I also point out that there are extensive preambles to each one of the items to justify the reason why we're doing this? Because in the bottom line is, we're trying to create an atmosphere of cooperation and, you know, preparation, really, in the situations. And I believe that when it talks about the legislative body, that's a little bit deceptive, but it had to work that way, because we can't do anything so far as anything past a censure with a city council circumstance. But I was adamant about making sure that this, even though it was a council item in the code, applied to everybody. In other words, basically from feet to head. Because if it was to apply to just the planning commissions and the committees down below it, that would seem like an unfair rule. And instead, we want to make sure that as far as it is enforceable, that everybody's under the same game plan. So that was, so that's why it's, that's why it's put together the way it is, and it does do that. It just, the measure of it is, is that it stops short of anything past censure with city council. Everything else is, you know, the same. So, anyway, I think it's there, but I will agree with what the city council wants to do.
Well, I believe that, I believe that the motion was, it's all there, but break it out for the different boards and commissions, for their, for their booklets, and for their own edification as to what applies to their particular board, commission, and committee. So it's not, it's not writing anything more, it's just breaking it out separately for each of the committees and commissions. Is that, is that my understanding of your motion?
Well, no, I guess, I'm not sure if I see how that works, because obviously, it's a, this is a cover everybody, it's stopped short of the city council removal situation. But how would you do it, then? Would you would say, oh, and by the way, the planning commission, this is what you do.
Well, no, for their booklet... No, for their booklet, it will have their oath of office and their code of conduct with their heading on it. So there's no mistaking that that's what applies to them. But it comes from what you have in this document.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. So do you still second that motion?
Second that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And thank you all again for your work on this effort. Councilmember Robles for starting it out, and Councilmember Wilson and Mayor Protem Hussey for your continued work on it. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, and just to remind yourself, with this template, we are going to come back now with the final document that includes this, as well as the other changes that you had recommended and approved prior.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to item nine, which is a transient occupancy tax ballot measure discussion and filing deadline overview. Madam City Clerk, Debra Thomas will be presenting this.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, Debra Thomas, City Clerk. Before you tonight is a transient occupancy tax ballot measure discussion and filing deadlines. This staff report supports our core values of open and inclusive government and engages in proactive communication. On June 9, 2020, it was proposed, it was proposed under the request for future agenda items to return to council with a proposal for a transient occupancy tax ballot measure. The item was introduced and approved by council four to one to be brought back for discussion. City council may propose a transient occupancy tax, TOT for short, as a general tax, which allows the revenue to be spent for any lawful purpose of the city. General tax measures must be placed on the ballot of a general municipal election by a two-thirds vote of the city council. However, California law states that a general tax measure can be placed on the ballot of a special municipal election if the city council unanimously declares that an emergency exists. Approval of such a general tax requires a majority voter approval. Alternatively, a special tax in which the revenues can only be used for a specific purpose may be proposed at any election date pursuant to the elections code without the need to declare an emergency, provided that council approves submission by a majority vote after a notice public hearing. Adoption would then require a two-thirds voter approval. The public may also seek to qualify a voter-sponsored initiative for a TOT ballot measure either as a general or special tax pursuant to the elections code. A voter-initiative general tax would require a majority voter approval to pass. Courts have ruled that a voter-initiative special tax only requires a majority voter approval to pass, however, the Supreme Court has not granted review as of this date. That is, there was a case law that's come about that stated that it was just a majority vote, 50 plus one, that a vote would prove from the public. However, I believe it has gone back for review at the Supreme Court level to either approve that change or still have that two-thirds voter approval. Staff contacted the county of San Bernardino registrar voters and identified November 2, 2021 as the next municipal election date that the city can consolidate for submission of a TOT ballot measure. This date would require a special election, as the next general election date will not occur until November of 2022. If council would like to participate in this odd-year polling place election, that election would take place on November 2. Unfortunately, staff was unable to acquire a cost estimate from the county elections office for this special election in 2021. However, the city clerk's estimate for a ballot measure election would be approximately $30,000 to $50,000, with an emphasis on the higher dollar amount, I believe around the 2013, when there was a tax measure that came through the city of Grand Terrace. It was approximately $30,000 at that time. And due to inflation, I'm assuming it will be up more to the higher level. So the following deadlines have been identified to file the required documentation to conduct the special election. So beginning with June 25, 2021, the council would need to adopt a resolution calling the election for the ballot measure, along with the notice of publication period and the measure publication period falling shortly behind that. July 19 is your impartial analysis submission deadline and your argument submission deadline. July 23 is the rebuttal submission deadline, and then we have the 10-day public examination period for both of those documents. And then the deadline to actually submit the ordinance measure to the ROV is August 6. Assignment of a measure letter then falls into play a few days later. The deadline to withdraw the measure, if that was a choice the council wanted to make. However, bringing this about, I don't think that would really apply. And November 2 would be the election date itself. If the, again, I'm sorry, we already went over that. It is staff recommendation at this time that city council provide direction to staff on whether to return to city council with an actual transient occupancy tax ballot measure and the related documents for further consideration on whether to place such a measure before the voters. That is the end of my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Are there questions at this time? Councilmember Hussey?
This is probably from Mr. Duffy. I know what you're saying, $30,000 to $50,000 estimated cost. What is the estimated cost you think the tax revenue will bring into our city each year?
A transient occupancy tax could generate anywhere from $200,000 to $250,000 if we look at the Greens Group project and the potential 90-room hotel.
Thank you.
Okay, I have Councilmember Robles, and then Councilmember Allen?
Two questions. Since we really do not know for an odd number of years what the price of the election would be, just an estimate, why would we have an issue to, or an urgency to have this on this fall's ballot? And what's the urgency? Do, you know, is there any, we don't have any lodging at this point. Do we expect lodging before 2021 or soon after 2021?
Well, no, there's no urgency here. This item was brought to us, I think she said maybe eight months ago. And so we were just following through with the council, it came to the council as a future agenda item. You guys said, yes, it's in the system, bringing it back to you. And so we're bringing to you now, in case there was a, in case you wanted to use the November date, we were telling you now is, here's an option for you. But you're right, we don't have any lodging in the system right now. And, but we're just following through with a future agenda item.
I'll just, you know, we had, we did say at that time, though, we, this was something that you had briefed us that we were going to do at some point, and we didn't see the urgency at that point until we had an actual lodging to tax.
Well, I actually got, there was some concern that we didn't bring it to you sooner, so it could be on the last election. And I just, I couldn't see us doing that, but I wanted to follow through with the bringing it forward.
Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I just, I think that getting ahead of, even, we know that there are developers who desire to put lodging facilities in Grand Terrace, and I just think it'd be better for us to be ahead of the power curve on that and have something in place in the event that that does occur. And my question has to do with the special tax. If we went with the special tax, and my understanding is, we have to, the tax has to be committed to one thing. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
No, that's not...
Or to a, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, so the, it was, special tax required to be used for the purpose identified, but it could be multiple subjects.
Right.
It could be a number of items. It doesn't have to be one particular, or it could be just only one item.
So, yeah, that, so I think you got on, you about answered my question. So we wouldn't have to dedicate it to just one thing. It could be for capital improvements, or...
Yes, it could be for anything. If that's the case for a special tax, you can identify a percentage to go to each area, whatever you identify. But if you tell the voters you're going to use it for X, you have to use it for X or X, Y, and Z, but you can't use it for anything other than what you've identified in the measure.
Yeah, I just can't go in the general fund. Okay. I had another one, but I forgot. So go ahead. I think Councilmember Wilson?
Councilmember Wilson?
So correctly identified, this is a bed tax. We anticipate having the ability to be able to administrate this tax, but not now. So is there any reason why we couldn't logically encompass this in a 2022 election?
That's certainly a possibility, sir. There isn't any urgency on our part. I said, we're following through with the request that the council wants us to bring this back to you. And what we've done here, though, is we, if we go back and look at this, we've given you sort of a timeline where it takes you from start to finish. So if it's a 2022 or 2023 item, we need to back that dates out so we can tell you what the process is.
Ten-four. I understand. So similar to a tentative map or record map, you bring it all the way up to the point before you're about to spend money, and you stop it right there and say, anybody want to buy it?
Right.
Yeah, I get it. Okay. So I would suggest that we look at it in relation to real time. And there has been several months that, you know, have elapsed over time that change our perspective on it. So it might be best to look at it and say, okay, I don't have to do this now, but we know now everything we needed to know to be able to make an informed decision. Thank you.
My question is, when is the hotel realistically going to be completed, assuming that the project moves forward?
Mayor, I was...
So, I mean, I understand that there are hurdles still to go, but assuming that it hits all the requirements that it needs to, and it gets approved to move forward, when is the earliest that it would be built?
I would give you a range of December of 2022 to June of 2023. I said, those are, that's a realistic timeframe.
Okay. And then, if we were to look at this calendar that was given to us, I believe in the staff report, it talked about the need for the council to declare a fiscal emergency in order to put this on the ballot?
Only if you were going to put a general tax on the ballot through a non-general election period. So if you follow the election cycle, you can do a general, you can do a general tax.
That funding would be allowed to be placed into the general fund. But you cannot bring that type of a tax.
So if we had a transit occupancy tax as a general tax, we would have to declare a fiscal emergency if we wanted to put it on the ballot in an off-election year?
Yes.
So, so following this calendar that's on here, if we said we want to go forward, and we wanted to make it a general tax instead of the specific tax, we would have to declare a fiscal emergency?
Yes.
That's what I thought I understood. All right, that's the last of my questions. Any further questions? No? Okay. Are there any, we'll open to public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So we'll close public comment and bring it back for further discussion. And we probably need to create a motion to provide direction to staff. Councilmember Allen?
So I feel like with the information that the, that the city manager and the city clerk gave us, especially with his timeline of the possibilities of this hotel opening, that as Councilmember Wilson stated, if the ballot measure is on the 2022 ballot general election, that that would put us ahead of the power curve still. We'd be ahead of the curve on that hotel opening and being occupied. The only thing that made me think about alternatives at one time was a, I read a report on instituting TOTs, and one of the things that the writer stated was that these rarely pass on the first time on the ballot. And I don't know why that is. I think there's, a lot has to do with getting the, educating the voters, the residents, on what it is and what it is not. But, yeah, I think 2022 is, because I don't see the value in spending all that money. I mean, I mean, in the big picture, it's not a lot of money, but it kind of is, I think, you know, $50,000 for an election.
So are you making the motion to give direction to staff?
So are you making the motion to give direction to staff to return to us about a year from now to consider this for the 2022 ballot?
I don't know if I would say a year, I would say in the future, within enough window, a timeframe where we can react to it. If it's eight months from now, or 10 months from now, or 12 months from now, but just, you know, I'll let the staff determine, you know, so that we don't get behind the power curve on it.
Okay.
And miss out. So I would make the motion that staff return at the, at a more appropriate time to prepare for the 2022 election.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It probably would be appropriate to identify maybe a timeframe for that, so we were talking maybe like April, May.
We would bring back the report to council in April just to identify what we're going to be doing and bring the documents back at the end of May to start the process.
Okay, and I, it would seem to me that the discussion that we would have then when it was brought back is whether it would be a, a special tax or a general tax, and we can, we can discuss that further at that time?
Yeah.
Mr. City Attorney.
The answer is yes. One other thing to maybe move it up a little earlier is, I know a lot of cities will want to do voter outreach to educate the public ahead of time. Again, we can't, you know, take a position, but we can educate and, and inform, and so you may want, maybe do it a little bit earlier so they can come up with a better plan of attack, assuming the council doesn't want to go in the direction of the TOT in November 2022.
I would ask that, that my colleagues consider amending their motion for direction to include when staff comes back, they come back with information about what we can do and what it might cost to have some sort of voter outreach and educational.
I'd amend my motion for that, to add that. Now, did the city attorney want me to, in my motion, did you want me to actually state a month or a date?
How about?
Like February?
First quarter?
First quarter, that's great.
2022?
If that's.
Okay.
Motion to revisit January 21, or 2022. Is that appropriate? Motion to revisit.
So you, so this is an alternate motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so the alternate motion is a revisit in January of 2022.
Yes.
And then the type of tax.
Okay, so I have, I have a first motion that was amending the motion to add that, that we would have staff bring back to us information about what we could do for voter outreach, what was, what was available to us to use and, and how much that would cost. And now I have an alternate, I don't have a second to that amendment, but I have an alternate motion to return in January of 2022.
And do all the same stuff in the first motion?
I don't have that, I don't have that in the alternate motion, I just have it to return.
Motion to revisit the issue at January of 2022.
Okay.
Second.
All right, does that get enough direction to staff?
Yes, it does.
Yes, I think so.
All right. So I have a motion to return in January of 2022 and a second. Motion by Councilmember Wilson, second by Mayor Protem Hussey. I'm going to call for the vote.
And Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number 10 is Housing Element and Surplus Land Act Annual Progress Report for the 2020 calendar year. Planning and Development Services Director, Steve Weiss.
Good evening, Mayor Magna Bo and council members. For the record, Steve Weiss, Planning and Development Services Manager. The item before you is the 2020 Housing Element and Surplus Land Act Annual Report. The visions are ensuring fiscal viability, promoting economic development by having an internally consistent general plan. So a little bit of background, government code requires each city and/or county to prepare and file an annual progress report or an APR describing housing production and the status of housing element program implementation. So regarding construction, the APR contains the total number of units constructed and the progress implementation of the city's housing programs. As set forth in the APR for 2020, a total of 17 new residential homes were completed in 2020, which were the Crestwood Development up off of Pico. The report still identifies housing units completed by affordability levels, but also reports on housing projects submitted and deemed complete to the planning division, the number of units entitled, which means approved by the city, and the number of units that were issued building permits. Each reporting category requires that the affordability of the unit is also identified. The next area is surplus lands. There was an Assembly Bill 1486 that was adopted in late 2019 that declares a shortage of sites available for housing for person and families of low and moderate income is a barrier to address urgent statewide housing needs, and that surplus government, government land prior to its disposition should be made available for that purpose. The reporting requirements for the APR changed effective July 1st of 2021, and now the city must also identify locally owned lands included in the housing, housing element sites inventory that have been sold, leased, or otherwise disposed of pursuant to the government code Conversely, Assembly Bill 1255 adopted on October 19, 9th of 2019 requires the city to recreate an inventory of surplus lands pursuant to the government code and all lands in excess of foreseeable needs, if any, that are owned by the city. So for 2020, there was one, and that's the .33 acre site just above us at the corner of Preston and Barton. It's an office professional property located at 22747 Barton, within the Barton Road specific plan. It is an administrative office, but it is surplus land, so it needs to be identified. So based on the recommendation, the APR, including the surplus lands reporting requirements is attached, was attached for the city council review and consideration, and staff recommends that the city council adopt the proposed resolution to receive and accept the APR for calendar year 2020. As part of the resolution, the city council will also direct staff to forward the report to the State Office of Planning and Research, OPR, and Housing and Community Development, which is HCD, as required by the government code. That does conclude staff presentation, and I am available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Weiss. Are there any questions at this time? There are no questions? Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we'll come back to council for consideration of a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'm making a motion to adopt the resolution of the city council, City of Grand Terrace, California, receiving and accepting the City of Grand Terrace Housing Element and Surplus Lands Act Annual Progress Report for the 2020 calendar year.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Allen and a second by Mayor Protem Hussey. Any further discussion on this item? All right, seeing none. Madam City Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Abstaining.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
I, yes, and I would like to know Councilmember Wilson's reasons for abstaining.
I, I'm going to have to do some more research in relation to 54221B, but it seems to me this is another state land grab circumstance. It feels as if we are reporting to the state what our inventory of excess land is that isn't already claimed for some kind of work, and that they will come back and mandate what we're going to do with that land. And I can't, can't support that, but I don't know that that's a fact, and so I'd like to find out for myself.
Okay. My understanding of an abstention is that you do it for a conflict of interest, but, but I understand. All right. So we'll move forward. Item number 11, agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and J. H. Douglas and Associates for Housing Element Consultant Services for the 2129 Housing Element Preparation. Again, we have Director, Planning and Development Services, Steve Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor. One more time in council. Again, Steve Weiss, yes, this is a professional services agreement for the preparation of the housing element for 2021 through 2029. It's an eight-year cycle. So the goals are to ensure fiscal viability and also promote economic development by having an internally consistent general plan. So a little bit of background, California state law requires the city update the housing element every eight years. These frequent updates are required because housing is critical to ensure economic prosperity and quality of life. State law requires that the adoption of the housing element by October 21, but provides a 120-day grace period to comply. Noncompliance with the state housing element law could result in fines, loss of sources of funding currently provided by the state. So you'll hear this term RENA a lot, I'll break it down a little bit as how it affects Grand Terrace. Regional housing needs assessment. And then, so every eight years, the state of California provides the number of housing units that should be accommodated in the Southern California Association of Governments five-county region, and SCAG allocates RENA contributions to the respective counties. And the five counties in SCAG are San Bernardino, Riverside, Orange, Ventura, and Los Angeles Counties, as well as their unincorporated areas. As part of the housing element update, the city must demonstrate to the state that there is available capacity for accommodating the county's RENA contribution. For the 21 through 29 planning cycle, the city received the following allocation based on income level. And so for very low, which is 0% to 50% of the HUD adjusted median income, it's, it would be 189 units. For low, which is 50% to 80% of the HUD adjusted median income, it's 92 units. For moderate, which is 80% to 120% of the HUD adjusted median, is 243, is actually 106, I'd be moderate, excuse me, and above moderate is above 120%, which is 243, for a total of 630 RENA units. So now let's get to the contract. The contract proposal that we received favorably is through John H. Douglas. He has done work for the city before, both as doing contract work and as helping out in other housing issues in areas. The cost proposal, $68,950 with a, about a $6,900 contingency, which, and the contingency will not be used without prior approval. The housing, it's also known as the housing slash safety element cost, will be mostly covered through an approved local early action planning grant, or also known as LEAP, which the city council authorized us to pursue last year. The city actually received, received the grant approval for $65,000, so a majority of this housing element will be covered through the LEAP grant. Within the council packet also attached is the proposed Housing Element Consulting Services contract with Mr. Douglas, and the acceptance from the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, for Grand Terrace's approval of a LEAP grant for $65,000, and also the prior city council resolution, 2020-18 authorizing city staff to pursue the LEAP grant. So for general plan consistency with housing elements, which is now the, the big element out there, it has to be done quicker than any other part of the general plan. We are also working on other grants, and we have, are, we're also seeking separate from this contract, and what's also known as a regional early action grant that will provide additional support from the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, a lot of acronyms, SBCTA, for the city to ensure general plan element consistency, which means this is more of a labor where they loan people to help us with this. And the city also received, also known as a Senate Bill 2 grant, planning grant to satisfactorily incorporate necessary amendments to the affordable housing implementation measures to, in the housing element and the general plan or other related SEQA, environmental documentation. So for a recommendation, we, we recommend that the council approve a professional services agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and J. H. Douglas and Associates for Housing Element Consultant Services for the 21 through 29 general plan element prep in the amount of $68,950 with a 10% contingency of $6,895. Also authorize the city manager to execute the agreement subject to the city attorney's approval as you form, and authorize the appropriation of the following fund sources, LEAP grant of $65,000 and general plan fund of $3,950. That concludes my presentation. If you should have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Weiss. Are there questions at this time? No questions. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we'll come back to council for consideration of a motion.
I move adoptions of recommendations one, two, and three.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Allen. Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have no requests for future agenda items tonight to, to look at. We'll move to council communications, beginning with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. I, I don't have anything to report.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Doug Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Number one, I am, I have got my second shot today. Encourage everybody to do the same thing. Try to be as bulletproof as possible, but that also means we have to continue with the health remediations that we've been instructed to do. And then on a lighter note, one of our own homegrown athletes, Daniel Sorensen, is in contract negotiations with the Kansas City, Kansas City Chiefs. He's worked with their organization now for six years. He plays safety in the defense, and looked like he may be a free agent for a while, but it looks like they're going to bring him back, so we wish him good luck. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem, Bill Hussey?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have just one item. I had a resident asking me a question about the Barton Road Bridge that is over the vacated railroad, and they, they were asking me about it and said that they had asked staff, and staff said, oh, we have no idea when that's going to move forward, which I don't necessarily believe that that's what staff said, but that's what the resident heard. And so just as a follow-up to that, I happened to be talking to the mayor of Colton, and he let me know that the preliminary engineering is to begin June of this year, and the Right Away Acquisition will begin in July of this year and go through June of 2022, and the construction will be July 22nd, or, excuse me, July of 2020 through June of 2023. And I'm sure that's what our staff knew, but just to, just to bring that up and clarify that's what's going on. So I appreciate staff for the work that you do, and that's all I have. Mr. City Manager, do you have communications?
I do not, Mayor, but if you would like to send that name to me, I can certainly have our Public Works Director call the citizen, because I know, I know that he's working very closely with the City of Colton on that project.
I, I figured that was the case, but, yes, I will, I will give you that resident's name. Thank you very much. And at this time, we will recess to closed session. We have one item tonight. It's conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section 54956.8. Properties 22317 Barton Road, APN 1167-231-01. 22273 Barton Road, APN 1167-231-02. 22293 Barton Road, APN 1167-311. 22293 Barton Road, APN 1167-311-01. City negotiators, G. Harold Duffy, city manager, Adrian Guerra, city attorney. Negotiating party, the Greens Group, Inc., and under negotiation is price and terms of payment. So at this time, we are in recess. All right, we'll reconvene to open session. The council met in closed session to consider one item, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section 54956.8. Three properties, 22317 Barton Road, APN 1167-231-01, 22273 Barton Road, APN 1167-231-02, and 22293 Barton Road, APN 1167-311-01. City negotiators, G. Harold Duffy, city manager, Adrian Guerra, city attorney. And negotiating parties, Greens Group, Inc., under negotiation price and terms of payment. There are no reportable actions at this time. We did, the council did give direction to staff. And so with that, we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting to be held on Tuesday, April 13th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. Any requests to have an item placed on a future agenda item must be made in writing, submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. At this time, we are adjourned.